You're good to go.
It's June 10th, this is the meeting of the Indiana Area School District. My name's Julia Trumarki-Pukarow. I'm Vice President of the Board and I'm pinch hitting for Walter Schroth. And we like pinch hitting because our baseball team won tonight. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Adams.
Here.
Here.
Julie and Marky Pukarow present. Mr. Harland.
Here.
Dr. McConvey.
Here.
Dr. Rig.
Here.
Dr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Steve.
Here.
Mr. Schroth. Mrs. Fongas.
Here.
So we have a packed house tonight. Wonderful, thank you everybody for coming tonight. I don't have a Board President message other than I'm just real excited about that baseball game. It's just wonderful.
Great.
And all of our teams have done so well this year, so.
Thursday at State College at 1:30 PM.
Yeah.
Be there.
State, you can watch it on YouTube.
Yeah, but we want you to go.
We want you to go.
Well, we don't know if they've got permission yet to do it, that's true.
They don't have permission to broadcast.
For the state championship game.
Yeah, it's a BIAA event.
Yeah, it'll cost money.
Well, we've been robbed.
Robbed, that's absolutely. I wrote a letter to Mr. Struzi about it, I was irritated.
Okay, very good. Any public comment?
No.
No public comment, all right. IAEA, AFSCME, SDO, or STUCO? We usually have Ronald Wang here and he's turned out to be class valedictorian or...
Valedictorian.
Yeah.
He's going to the University of Penn to study material science.
Yeah.
Very proud.
And he plays the violin beautifully.
In the symphony.
In the symphony, really something. So we'll miss him and wish him well. Superintendent's report, Mr. Heinrich.
Yes ma'am, very brief report because I want to get to some of our presentations, but I do want to congratulate Mr. McQuaheny, Mr. Johnson and their team at the senior high for a beautiful commencement ceremony on Friday evening. I especially want to thank Ms. Tracy Sexton because behind the scenes she is the one that does a lot of the work that no one sees. But it's very, very important and she does a fantastic job. I also want to thank Mrs. Williams and Mr. O'Leary for the work that they do and all of our music instructors from K to 12 because I was just blown away by how good our musicians were and how good the singers were. It's like you're sitting there listening to a symphony orchestra.
It works.
And it's just, they're so good. So kudos to everyone that took part in that and put that on for our kids. It's something that the families will remember forever. We've got a lot of nice compliments, so. So that's it, that. And then I did want to make, congratulate Coach Petroff and the boys' baseball team for their incredible run this season. They will be playing Thursday 1:30 PM at State College. And we're planning on attending, so that's it. Go see Pat. That's it, Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much, that's a good report. We don't have a solicitor's report tonight.
No, I asked Mr. Repack to come on the 24th instead.
Very good. But we do have some presentations tonight. I saw a picture in the paper of Mr. Perkovich with all of his books. There he is. That was a very nice story and he's here to make a presentation tonight. Come on up.
So we'll try to keep it nice and short for you, but we had a project at the 4-5 buildings this year that really turned into something I think that turned out to be pretty special. And I think all these kids here will tell you, and hopefully they will in a second, how much they liked it and how hard they all worked and like just the incredible product that you have in your hands that you see. So if you remember, like the 80s, early 90s were like this big boom of like the Choose Your Adventure books. You get to read a page, turn to a page, a bunch of different endings. It was awesome. So just what started out as an activity at the beginning of the library where I'm just like, hey, here's some new books that we had. I loved those growing up, so I was like, hey, we have four new Choose Your Adventure books. And everybody was like, what are those? And I said, well, let's check them out. We read one together and they loved it. And somebody just said, you know what, Mr. Perk, we should write one of these. And being the optimist, I said, yeah, we absolutely should. And then after a couple of weeks of planning, we started the project. And if you look around, each of the books that is on your desks is an individual book. Each of the 9-4-5 classes made their own book and each book is, minus the first two pages, entirely unique. There's over 1,000 unique pages that your 4-5 students created this year. And with the help of AI, we were able to illustrate them in a pretty professional-looking way. We did the best we could to kind of make the pictures look like the kids themselves. So if you see any of our kids on any of these pages, you might be like, oh, that kind of does look a little bit familiar. So we did that and then with the help of Mrs. Eisenman, she made sure that every kid got a copy of their books because they worked so hard and it was such a fun, nice project. So what I'll do here is I'll introduce you to our 4-5 kiddos that came with us today. They had asked, hey, is there anybody here that worked really, really hard and you think did a great job on the project? And these are them. They really knocked it out of the park. The way it worked was there were 32 endings in each book and we didn't have 32 kids in each class. So a lot of these kids here stepped up and wrote multiple endings. You might see a couple in there that look like me too because even with that, we didn't have enough, so I filled in a few, but everybody here really did just an absolute stunning job and.
Is this you?
That is me, yes. That's me and Liam. Yep. So, yeah, it's not perfect, but it's okay. And it was so fun as the project went on. Because the first week we came in, I wrote the first two pages and I said, all right, kids, half the class writes about this choice, half the class writes about this choice. And then we'd read through all the answers, we picked the ones that fit best. And the next week they came in, we're like, okay, a quarter of the class writes about choice one, a quarter writes choice two, a quarter choice three, a quarter choice four. And then it just grew exponentially until we got to our 32 endings. And each week we would update them and be like, okay, here's who got picked last week, here's your story, here's your picture. And I think the first week that you guys actually saw the pictures, they were just like, whoa, wait a second, this is a little bit more exciting than I think we thought it was going to be because this isn't just a, hey, let's write a book and, you know, print it off on the printer. I mean, they made a book that fits right on the shelf beside the Choose Your Adventure books that they based them on. And it's so fun and a lot of these kids get to have them forever. And my plan is we'll have a whole set in the junior high library, a whole set in the senior high library, and a whole set in the elementarys. We can just keep adding so when these guys get to high school, if they're like, hey, are those books we read in fifth grade? They can go pull one off the shelf and maybe get a good laugh a few years later. So I'll start off with Isa. She is one of our All-Stars. And do you want to say, Isa, what you really enjoyed about the project or what your favorite thing was?
I enjoyed that, like, we got to, like, write the book about our own, of our own imaginations.
Absolutely. And if you get a chance to look, the imagination is what is absolutely key because first two pages are the same and they are just all over the place where we have people going to spaceships and people talking to dragons and people living in underground caves. It's just like crazy how far away they went. Next we have Emma Rupert.
I feel like we really had, like, our own, like, we could create whatever we wanted. We had our own creativity that's limited, we didn't really have a limit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whatever we wanted.
That's what we like. How about you, Rodney?
I feel like that sort of gave us a way to, like, show, like, our, like, what's it called? Personality and, yeah, imagination.
Yeah, and I agree with that. It's fun to see, you know, there are kids that took it real seriously and they're like, okay, you have these two choices. One's real serious and one, you know, another one's real serious. You have to think about this where somebody else was like, oh, let's throw pizza at wild chickens and then they turn to the cheese and like, yeah, it was super fun. Max?
I had a really fun time making a story and you could tell everyone was having a great time by face expressions. I love being able to make and create a story.
Love it. How about you, Damaya?
I liked how I did this on my creativity and how we did stuff.
Yeah, very good. Bailey?
It is our, we got to pick the adventure we went through and it was just really, really fun to do.
That's what we like to hear. And I mean, I'll say before I was a librarian, I was a high school English teacher for 13 years and even including that time, this is without a doubt like the best, most fun, most engaged project I think I've ever been a part of. It almost felt like I was like cheating my job a little bit because I would come in and the kids would say, are we writing those books today? And they would just be silenced for 40 minutes while they sat there and typed. And just to see them enjoy writing and reading and the whole process, I think was absolutely fantastic. So I just wanted to share it with you and bring some of our All-Stars to the...
What do you want to say, Mr. P., guys?
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, it's, you guys did the big part of the work and I just put it all together in front of them, so.
I have to ask you, how does it feel to be a published author?
Yeah.
It's really, really cool.
Were people that, you know, fight their whole lives to do that and you guys didn't fit for it, so.
Bailey, did you sign any contract for royalties?
Any questions? How long did it take to write the book?
Like, per chapter?
Three months or like? Yeah, I mean, either, per chapter or the whole book? About three, three months.
So probably from like, I don't know, what, November to like...
Yeah, so we started working on them in late October. And the actual writing time itself was about five weeks where each week they would write a section. But there were a couple of times where we had to take breaks just because by the end it was tough for nine classes on for like, you know, you get 16 pages for each class for nine classes all done by the next week. So we took a little break here and there and then had the kids kind of go back through and we edited and it was a nice process. But we kind of started in November and we finished up in early May and took a break here and there to get other stuff done.
You guys going to write any books this summer?
No.
Anybody want to become a writer now that you got a little taste?
Well, thank you.
I just like to say while we're here, Mr. Perkovich has been a fantastic addition to our team here. Sometimes you hire people and you're like, ah, that was a good job. And sometimes you're out of me like, that was a fantastic home run and he's been a homie. So thank you for everything you've done to transform this district.
Thanks for bringing me here.
All right, guys, I got some reading to do.
You're welcome to stay up.
I mean, if you want, if you want to read, by all means, I have some extra stuff.
He has been Steve's.
Yeah.
No, no, you do. I have yours. I have one.
You guys, is anyone here wants to eat a coffee? Grab one, we have a few orchestras singing. Um, that's like one. Do I have, I guess it's more this year. So, um, I've always been a grand...
Does she have Mrs. Wampert's clothes? That's her life. One more breast season and we're all paid.
You will be next, yeah, you want to give, come up and...
Yes.
I know it's down.
Oh, okay. Oh, really? Okay, cool.
Mrs., do you need me to share anything, Jackie, with the folks at home? Did you send it to them, that thing you sent to me last time?
Yes. The PowerPoint, not the next one.
So our second presentation is Jackie from Strategy Solutions, Dr. Jackie Pattemo. We're anxious to hear what you have to tell us about Horace Mann's school.
I'm so excited to share them, although I didn't read a book, so I feel like, you know. So you just scratched some numbers.
So how would you like it?
I'm going to share, I'm going to share my screen here, one second. Randy, can you give me screen sharing capabilities or would you rather I just share the PowerPoint with you?
Whichever you like, but anybody can share their screens, so you should be able to, I'm just going to do that.
Google would disagree with you at this moment. It says that, no, I am not allowed to share my screen, so let me just send this to you.
Google Meet has been different.
And...
Oh, yep, you're right, I do have screens being, it's completely turned off, sorry.
That's all right, no problem. I just like being right for once. Usually you giggle at me. Coming your way. So it's the PowerPoint, obviously.
And then Robert, you have an hour one or two more, are there? Reading pleasure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're a little technical.
Because it's, we've had some issues with Google Meet today, so it's a Monday in summer.
You want me to share or you, you're going to do it? Randall?
Hello?
Come in.
Randy?
Yeah, the screen sharing is turned on, but if you want me to do it, you can, you can send it.
I already sent it, but I will bring it right up. Hold on one second.
I know, but I want to go. Okay, there we go. I'm going to skip right to the second one and get off the cover page if you want to just kind of jump right into it. Yep, perfect. So we got a great response considering the survey was really only live for about two weeks. I know when we initially pitched it, there was some concern about getting it done, but in total we ended up with 785 responses that we could actually prove lived in the district. So there were a couple that we did exclude because there was, even though we had asked for name and address, the address field wasn't necessarily locked, right, to have to give name or zip code, like street add. So there were some that, you know, were just anomaly. We got one from eighteen Tennessee, so we made sure that we had folks who were legitimately in the district. So we ended up with 785, which is great because I know we had shared, we'd be happy with 400. 400 is typically representative of a community, so 785 is great to have, for us to have had. And then you can see the breakdown. So, but we did end up with the majority were parents, so 579 or 73.8% of that sample reflects parents. And then next to that was community members at 357 or for just under half of the sample size. We had 67 teachers and 41 staff members who took the survey. And then the table below just shows you the breakdown. Now, folks could do a check all that apply, which is why you see numbers and not percentages because the percentages would be, would not necessarily make sense. So, I mean, we did get a nice representation of parents from all groups. Elementary, 4-5 was a little bit light in comparison, but overall we did get folks who represented all grade levels. We then took the list of addresses that we received and someone at the district did this magical little thing and assigned to them all a distance from Horace Mann. So we were able to also do an analysis for those who live within half a mile, those who live within a mile, and then anybody outside of a mile. So obviously those within a mile also include those within half a mile. So we had 111 responses who lived within half a mile of Horace Mann. And then if you add those who are just outside of that, we had 245 who are within a mile of the building and then 539 that fell outside of that. So the majority fell sort of outside of that. But again, 111 within half a mile is a really big number when you think about the small geographic area that we're talking about. And then again, you can just kind of see where the different individuals break down. So the majority of those living within half a mile were parents or community members. And then for the parents, again, a nice break, nice representation and breakdown among the elementary schools. So again, you can kind of progress that granular detail out in the leisure. So this next slide shows you the all-in responses, so we will kind of look at the breakdown by group. But when you look at the all-in responses, the solid red bar are those who agree that these options were good for the community. The little dashed patterned bar are that the option was good for the student. So at a quick glance here, it's sort of just kind of scanning red lines. Option four scored the highest by everyone who took the survey in terms of being good for community. And then it also scored highest in being good for students, although the option one is pretty close in terms of percentage, in terms of that. So again, just at a quick snapshot, option four was highest for both students and the community overall.
And so that's the one that says IASD sells Horace Mann to an education provider after the 2025 school year.
Yeah, yeah, so option four was to sell the building.
Jackie, were they forced to choose one of these five options or...
No, so not on this particular slide. So the data that this represents is each option, they were asked on a three-point scale to indicate their level of agreement if this option was good for the community and then for the student. So this is the percentage that said agree.
So it's not a landslide?
No, there is a slide later on that shows you when they were forced to pick which option was selected. But this is just meant to kind of show if we looked at the criteria, what's good for the students and what's good for the community. Again, they could reach all of them, so they could have rated all of them high if they so choose to. But based on that, again, option four was the highest in the community there. The next slide shows you the differences in opinions. So just kind of for a quick visual, green shows you where each group scored highest. So the top table shows you for the community, the bottom table shows you for students. Again, this is the same question, so this was on that three-point agreement scale. This is showing you the percentage that agreed. So option four, in terms of what's good for the community, was the, received the highest level of agreement by all groups except for teachers who rated option two, which would be that the district maintains Horace Mann but leases it for education purposes versus option four, which is sell the building for educational purposes. The bottom chart shows you the percentage that agree that each of these options are good for the students. Again, lots of difference of opinions here in terms of option four when you look at students. The overall sample size said that and then the staff, whereas parents felt option one, which is the district keeps Horace Mann, was the best for students. Teachers felt option two, leasing it for educational purposes, was the best. And then the community felt, also felt option one, keeping it, was the best.
Interesting slide.
So the next slide shows you, again, same question, percentage agreement, but based on that geographic level. So again, you've got the overall number just for the comparison. And then those who live either within half a mile or within a mile of the building felt that both for the community and for students, option one, which again is keep the building, was the highest, where those who live outside of a mile of Horace Mann felt option five, which is just to sell the building, not necessarily for educational purposes, but just in general, was the best option for both the community and the schools. So this next slide shows you, so this one here was a forced, so they could only pick one. So of the five options, which is your preferred option or there was the ability to share something else if there was something else that they felt. So again, this is all-in, not broken out by groups. When you look at the entire sample size, option five, when forced to make a decision, was the preferred with about a third of the sample. So again, it's not necessarily a landslide, but it is the highest number with about a third of the population indicating that option five, which again is just to sell in general, was their preferred option. And then on the side, you can just see some of the options that people wrote in. So other was a choice, so a handful of folks chose that option. Again, so just reiterating, keeping it for academic purposes, not necessarily noting anything in particular. There was some interest in the historical nature and preservation of the building. There were a handful of comments about tearing it down and using it either for green space or for a park. Some folks suggested that that Horace Mann should be maintained and maybe Eisenhower should be the building being considered to be removed from the district. A couple of folks suggested combining option one and two, which option two, by default, keeps that as a district building, so you would be able to do with it as you so choose. Maybe making it a small business incubator was suggested, expanding East Pike and Ren Franklin and then eliminating the other two elementary districts, other district buildings was suggested. Again, just a comment to sell it to the highest bidder. And maybe utilize it for after-school programming, use it for grades four and five, maybe a sense instead of selling it to give it to the historical society, again with that eye on the historical nature of the building. Anything that saves money and would financially make sense, kind of regardless of option, was noted. Use for behavioral health children or early education was also suggested, as was cyber school, trade schools, and then just in general to maybe create one big elementary school as opposed to a four. So those were some of the comments that folks wrote in in terms of what they felt another option might be. So the next slide, if you don't mind scrolling, again, will show you one of those tables with the color coding where green indicates the highest option. So again, when forced to make a decision in terms of a preferred option, the highest, again with about a third of the respondents from each category, was option five, which is just to sell in general, whereas parents prefer to keep the building and not sell it for the state. And then those based on geographic proximity, those within both a half a mile and a mile preferred, just under about half of the respondents in those groups, said to keep Horace Mann as their preferred option. And then those outside of a mile aligned with the overall response population to suggest just to sell it in general. And then the next handful of slides have a bunch of text on them. I won't read them all, but just kind of a snapshot of what folks gave in terms of open-ended responses for each option in terms of what some of the pluses and possibilities were versus what are some of the concerns. And a lot of them are consistent across the board because they relate to the building and we're talking about the building in all of the options. So when we look at option one, which is that the district keeps the building to utilize for academic use while renovating other buildings, some of the pluses or potentials are just you retain, you know, control over the building. It gives you the additional space for overcrowding in other areas, allows the ability for those walkable schools. Students are used to it, right? So there's that familiarity there. It could potentially save some financial resources as opposed to having to bring in trailers if you're looking to renovate buildings instead of having to bring trailers to house students who already have an appropriate, you know, facility to do that in, which would be better than trailers and then just provides a nice student-to-teacher ratio. Some of the concerns are just the overall expense. It's an old building, there's maintenance, there's upkeep. Health concerns was mentioned again with just the condition and the age of the building. It's not accessible or ADA compliant, so that's a concern for academic use. Right now, you know, kind of the timeline, like how long would we be holding on to this building, you know, was a potential concern. The impact on taxpayers, again, to have to continue to maintain an additional building, given some of the concerns with the building, the lack of air conditioning, the health concerns, ADA compliance, things like that. You know, several people wrote in that it doesn't necessarily make a conducive or positive learning environment either. There was some safety about the age of the building and then just traffic flow kind of in and out were some of the concerns with that option. Option two is to lease the space to an educational provider. So some of the pluses with that were just, it could potentially help students who have need emotional support or have behaviors because they could be housed in a dedicated space. Again, you could maybe save some cost expenses there if you're maintaining it or leasing it would give you some additional revenue to do that. In general, it'd bring revenue to the district. The building would be utilized for something, so it's not vacant. Maybe could be used for a private school, which could benefit some of the students. And another option was maybe used for a Christian school. Some of the concerns, again, are identical just with regards to the condition of the building, overall cost to the taxpayers, the impact it would have on students if there's someone else potentially in the building. It would bring competition to the area, which some people felt might be a concern, as was just sharing space and kind of how would students be safeguarded and away from whatever other educational services were being provided in the building. Option three is that the district would lease space to any interested businesses, groups, not necessarily if they were an educational provider or not. So again, pluses, very similar, it's additional revenue or income for the district. It would help eliminate some of the expense and tax burden to the community. The building would not be sitting vacant if there were folks in it. And it's just a good opportunity for those businesses, community groups, organizations who may be looking for additional space. Some of the concerns, again, you'll see repeated here, the condition of the buildings, that schools are already overcrowded, so where are we getting space to stick additional people? Some concerns that the district itself should not be a property manager or a landlord and leasing would put you into that space. The potential impact on the district or the community, not knowing who would lease that space, there was some concern, you know, it could become, you know, a place where they're selling gates or a tattoo parlor, right? So things that may be viewed as negative or derogatory potentially in the community. The lack of parking is certainly a concern. And then impact on the fact that, again, noting that there's a lot of history, it's a historical building and that could potentially be lost. When you look at, oops, missing an option on that. This is option four, though, that the district would lease some space to an educational provider. So some of the pluses about that is there was additional support that students need, so that could potentially bring those services into the district. It would still have the building be used for educational purposes. It would help relieve some of the financial burden, again, back to bringing some revenue or income to the district. If you... If these services are available to students, that's a big benefit. There's potentially less liability if you sell it versus lease it there. Again, getting you out of a landlord property management spot. One less thing for you to have to manage, again, back to cost expenses. And then there wouldn't be the need for additional taxes or the burden on taxpayers. Some of the concerns, again, similar with regards to the safety and the condition of the building itself. Concerns about what would happen if the building needed, or if the district needed that building and we've now removed that asset from ourselves. Again, you see the historical concepts show up again. And then another concern was the impact it would have on the students. So are we now bringing longer bus rides for individuals? And then option five would be that the district would sell Horace Mann to, again, anyone who might be interested, a business or group, whenever we're having, whatever it may be, unless you. So some of the, some of the pluses, again, it would have a positive financial impact on the district, generating some revenue. You eliminate the cost of, you know, maintaining the property, things like that. It would remove an unnecessary building. It would get you, again, back to the liability. If you're not leasing, you don't have the liability. And then money could be used to bring in new students, new programs, help improve buildings, so ultimately benefit the student population. Some of the concerns, again, if we're eliminating the history of the building, there's some concerns about parking, zoning, the conditions of the space. We also see longer bus rides show up on this along with the loss of the walkability of the school as well. So similar, similar for either option. Again, long list on the next slide of some of the other recommended uses. We, we don't necessarily need to talk about all of them. Some of them are similar to what was identified in terms of other options, but it could be used as a district admin building. It could be used for, you know, tutoring, after-school clubs, maybe a RAC center that can provide open gym services, a nonprofit organization that could potentially do housing for homeless individuals, veterans, maybe house special populations within the district. You could put free care or emotional support there. The gym could be used for practices for different sports groups or other things. You could bring back, a couple suggestions were to bring back classes that were no longer available, like Draper's Ed would chop, things like that, that that space could be used for that. Again, the idea of preserving for historical preservation is mentioned, as is tearing the building down, either for a park, playground, green space, or maybe a smaller elementary building. So that's just a snapshot of some of the suggestions. Again, you'll get all of the information. So what does this mean in a nutshell? So last slide here. So option four, which is to sell for edu- to an educational provider, was viewed as the best for community. Again, if we're just looking at overall, we talked about the nuances. Unless you go, so we talked about the nuances in the population earlier. And then options one, four, or five, so really not a whole lot of consistency there. But one is to keep it and four and five are both to sell it, were identified overall in terms of best for students. Those that live in close proximity to the district, again, when we're looking at either that half a mile or a mile, felt that keeping the building was in the best interest of the district. If you just look overall at what all of the data says, the overall preference is to sell the building. And then option five is the preferred option when forced to, to make a decision. So, questions?
Questions? Anybody have a question? Sue, you have a question?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very detailed.
Yeah, it's very helpful. I really like the way you broke down the data so we can see, yeah, what everybody's preference is based on location and by their interests, so.
Yeah, those are so close, it's interesting.
I mean, you can see the clear preference, but it's still, it's not by a wide margin.
No, no, overall it's not, especially when you break down, break down the different groups. And there really was no statistically significant differences when you look at it either. So again, when you look overall, you know, it definitely speaks to one thing, but certainly some, some considerations. And I did provide Rob with all of the open-ended comments. So again, this is sort of just a synopsis of some of the common reoccurring themes, but you will get an Excel file that has all of, and all of the comments that were provided that you can certainly take and get.
We got that already, we got that already.
Yeah, I'll get that, I'll forward that all to the board right after this.
Well, you did, you know, we have.
I did? Yeah, I did. I was like, I'm glad I did.
Absolutely. So if any questions come up as you, you know, take your time to sit with it all, please.
So we have some homework.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thanks, everybody. Absolutely.
All right, Randy, I'm turning over the mothership to you. We are back on the agenda.
Okay, we have motions three point one and three point two. Approval of the minutes, do I have a motion?
I approve it, we approve three point one and three point two.
Second.
Moved it second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. And those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Board reports. Indiana County Technology Center, Mr. Schroff was not there. I was there and Rob was there. So Rob, I'm going to ask you to go over some of the key points.
Yeah, we discussed many things, a lot, a lot of talk around the River Valley School District choosing, announcing their intention to pull out of the ICTC that was on the discussion for sure, and what that might mean for all the sending schools. The next step would be that at some point, each send to each of the partner schools will have to vote on whether or not we want River Valley to be allowed to leave that, that partnership. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do between now and when we would feel comfortable bringing that to you. There's a lot of legal things that we have to work through with our solicitor, with ICTC solicitor. They brought in special counsel on this because there might have been a conflict of interest with the Beer Group because they represent several of the sending schools and ICTC, so they, they went outside of the Beer Group for this particular action. So that was the big one. We also talked about the potential for the contract and we, some hirings and trying to think if there was anything significant.
Yeah, I think that it was a good meeting. They had a particularly successful graduation ceremony. They're going to have to get a bigger place, I guess.
They are going to have to get a bigger place.
They were real pleased about that.
They use our place, for those of you who don't know. They use our junior high and we're spilling over.
Spilling over, yeah, so that's good. The other thing, just to emphasize that to the public, I think you said this, but there is an article in the Gazette that indicated that Blairsville may be paying $32,000 a year per student to go to the ICTC, but we do not. So that is, that's the unique to their district.
Absolutely correct. And they, they, the number that Mr. Martel shared may be very accurate, paying $32,000 for a student. However, that's because River Valley over the last several years have reduced the number of students that go to ICTC. So the formula that dictates how much each school district should pay, they should be paying much, much less than that. The average school district should be paying around $10,000 a kid for each of those programs, between 10 and 11,000. So River Valley paying 32,000, although maybe accurate, is a result of their decisions, not, not ours. So that's very important to clarify that, that, you know, they've chosen that. They are going to be financially liable for that money for at least three years, which is one of those legal things that we're going to have to reach, work out before we bring it to you for a vote to let them go. They need a majority of all the sending schools to release them from that contract. So they're going to, they're going to be incentivized to make that right and to make sure that their financial applications are met. But, you know, we have to make sure that that's ironclad before we would take any action to let them go.
Yeah, our cost per student for the ICTC is about 11,000.
Correct, it's just a smidge under 11,000 per student, yep.
Alrighty, thank you. Erin, Dr. Mc.
Yes, we met on May 21st. We approved the list of payments, deposits, treasures, report, and budget. We accepted resignation of one paraprofessional, one regular hourly staff member. And then we hired one full-time and one part-time speech-language pathologist. We hired two full-time special educators, two full-time pairs, and several 21st century after-school program staff for summer. We approved a leave of absence and two applications for retirement benefits. We accepted an early intervention assistive technology grant from the TESARORA intermediate unit for $15,000. We had several agreements, MOUs, and contracts. We approved the purchase of a new Kubato tractor because the tractor, Erin, is on its last leg. We approved a MOU with Dr. Mattson regarding her performance evaluation. We approved and adopted the policy for hiring staff and the IU's health and safety plan review. Dr. Mattson updated the board on House Bill 157, early intervention. The bill will now include a student, or children to be eligible through age six for students with autism. It's currently at age five. And Dr. Mattson also encouraged all board members within the IU to attend the PSBA delegate assembly on November 2nd.
Thank you. Outreach Committee, Dr. Jim Schaefer.
No meetings since our last board meeting.
Thank you. Indiana Free Library, Quintina, Mrs. Thomas.
The program advocacy committee met. We just discussed ways to build awareness on library programs and to how to recruit volunteers for events.
Good, so you got into the, the old Bill Hastings con inside of the AMAS. Yeah, that's good. PSBA updates, Dr. Sally.
Yes, just there are a lot of micro courses you can take online on, on your MyPSBA, just sort of to update you on things like policy and legal, personnel negotiations, advocacy. If you have extra time and you feel like doing something, that's an option. Also, you got the self-assessment results. And what we need to do next is set a date. We don't have to do it tonight. I'm hoping Rob can figure out a way to do this, but set a date for discussion of results. And, what's her name, Erin from PSBA will lead that discussion. She said it usually is one hour long. It can, it can be executive session, it can be open. I suggest most of the people do an executive session. And some people do it an hour before the board meetings, but we have all of our committee meetings, so we'll have to do that. And I'm thinking probably this won't be done until August, I don't know.
I'd say mid-July to August, somewhere in there.
Yeah, if it's mid-July, are we having a meeting in July?
Hoping to cancel it, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm, we're hoping to, so a lot of people are hoping that. If we don't need it.
But we'll see, Jared, Jared will always have something for us to.
Jared. No, 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 no.
Who's Jared? He doesn't come to me.
So I don't know how we could do, do this to set a date.
With your permission, Dr. Montgomery, I'll reach out to Erin and we'll find out what her calendar allows, since she's got to be here. And then I'll reach out to all of you with a couple of dates and we'll pick the best date and get it done as early as possible without being a burden to anyone.
Okay, so I'm not trying to, I just want to clarify. She wants us to set the date first. And she said, pick out a couple of dates. And she said, if she can't be here, then the next person will come and do it.
Okay.
So she prefers that we get back to her with some dates.
So why don't I send out a poll tomorrow to you guys and we'll start picking some possible dates that would work? What I'd like to do is like, policy and personnel, for example, is something we don't have to meet every month. So maybe we pick the next policy and personnel meeting or, you know, something like that and then replace that with an exec session before a board meeting.
That's wonderful.
That'd be August.
In August. And that would be the best thing to do. So if that works for them, I'd say that would be most logical to me.
Okay, should I look then for that, is, you know, to see when?
I'll look it up tomorrow and I'll send it out to you. We'll pick that date, we'll pick a backup just in case and we'll send those there.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Academic and Extra Curriculum Committee. Sue, you're up.
Yes, we did have a meeting on June 3rd. A three-hour meeting on June 3rd. Many of the things that we discussed are on tonight's agenda, so I'm not really going to go through it in great detail, but I did want to acknowledge the partnership with IUP. We're going to talk about that a little bit later, with IUP and WCCC. We had a presentation via servo about the human trafficking. Mr. Donovan Daniel came to talk about his program and leadership for black and brown students at IUP and how we want to work together. He sent us a very nice video. I hope everybody had a chance to look at the video he sent to the board with his current students. We looked at the TSI plan, which is also on the agenda, that was presented by the senior high team. And I do want to compliment them on a great job. That's the targeted support and improvement program. And the subgroup in particular, special education. They did a great job with the plan, I think will be good. The Healthy Champions Program, Ms. Eisenman gave us a brief presentation. There, it's a free program that our school nurses would like to explore. We had an ESL presentation by the ESL teachers. We had the science curriculum materials. We briefly discussed the River Valley MOU we have on the agenda for tonight. And then last, the non-agenda but deliberation items were the Horace Mann repurposing. And you saw the presentation earlier this evening. And we had an excellent report by teacher Jenna Chakot, who was on sabbatical last year. She gave us an update. So moving to the motions. First one is an exciting one. It's our candidate's first tenure. So if you are present and when I read your name, would you please stand? Natalie Beck, East Pike Elementary Teacher. Monica DiLoreto, East Pike Elementary Teacher. Alyssa Gililand, East Pike Art Teacher. Erin Janetsky, Senior High Biology Teacher. Angela Lancy, East Pike Elementary Teacher. Heather Miller, Horace Mann Elementary Teacher. And Nicole, Nicholas Smith, Junior High ELA Teacher.
She's online.
Is she online?
I think she's out of town.
She's online, she's out of town.
Okay. So I moved that the board issued tenure contracts to Natalie Beck, Monica DiLoreto, Alyssa Gililand, Erin Janetsky, Angela Lancy, Heather Miller, and Nicholas Smith, who have satisfactorily completed three years of teaching.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I would just like to make clear for the public what tenure is. Tenure is basically teachers moving from what they call temporary professional employees, where technically they could be dismissed from their position at any time, although it's not quite that easy, moving into, into the permanent position. They are now permanent, full-fledged teachers anywhere in the state of Pennsylvania. So once you're granted tenure, no one can take that away from you. It's basically a rite of passage to reflect the great work that they've done. On a personal note, I will say this. I think I hired all of you, or was pardon hiring all of you, and I will say that my record is impeccable. We really have done a nice job hiring. I mean, it's so hard when you see a teacher leave and you, and you think, man, we're never going to be replaced that person. Oftentimes, we're wrong. We have really great, not only teachers, but leaders here, people that step up, especially a lot of the people here. You can find them working in the hallows at, you know, 6:00 at night, setting up for the Under the Sea event or at, at Sit and Stay, selling t-shirts for a cause in the community. These are truly some of the people that really go above and beyond and, and I really, I think they embody what we look for in employees. So I just want to thank all of you and congratulate all of you on the work that you've done and hope that you keep it up.
Now, we have. We have.
Motion.
Motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye. And all those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, thank you.
If anyone has an objection, I'd like to take 5.3, DePaul School Hearing and Speech Service Agreement, 5.4, Center for Hearing and Deaf Services, 5.5, Facilities Usage Agreement, 5.6, Disciplinary Agreement, 5.7, Plan for Substained Materials Request, ESL Materials, 5.8, 5.9, Physical and Occupational Therapy Contract, 5.10, Dual Enrollment Program Agreement. And that one is with the Community College of Beaver County. 5.11, a servo partnership,[1696.42] 5.12, Excellence and Progress Leadership Conference, that's the one I spoke about that Mr. Donovan Daniel came to speak, Senior High TSI Plan, and the Healthy Champions Program.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Discussion, please. Any comments or questions?
I just have one comment that I think that Rob told us on the servo program. You're going to have the teachers make sure that it's appropriate to the grade level that they present.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that's a pretty heavy topic.
That's it.
Human trafficking involves pornography and prostitution and things that are... That people have... They should have a concern about the way it's approached in the classroom. Our school psychologists are going to be part of that training and part of the planning of the training to make sure that we get an appropriate product for the kids.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
5.15, there's the IUP, WCCC, IASD Associates Degree in High School Partnership. That based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the partnership between IUP and WCCC to provide a more affordable and versatile associate's degree in high school.
Second.
Somebody moved it.
Yeah.
It's been seconded. Discussion, please.
Do you want to say anything?
I do want to say a lot, actually. I want to say thank you. I want to say that this is exciting. This is one of the most exciting things we've done in my tenure here. To put this into perspective, this is like stealing. Two years of college for under $6,000 for one of our students because they go to Indiana Area School District. That's exciting. And it's a possibility because of the hard work of the people at IUP and the people at WCCC and Wade McElhaney and Justin Zawarchak, who put their heads together and knocked down the barriers and made things work. And they did it because they understand that this is a win-win-win. We want to build a pipeline to IUP. We want to use and engage Westmoreland Community College in that effort. And we want to produce hard-working, well-trained individuals who are going to come back and work in our community and buy homes in our community and plant their roots here. So, this is an example. This is a unique example of what can happen when like-minded people put their heads together and solve problems. So, I'm very, very excited. This is the only program like this that I know about in the entire Commonwealth. I think it's that big a deal. And I just have to say thank you to Kristen O'Hara, who did a lot of the heavy lifting, Jen Ackles, who did a lot of the heavy lifting, Dr. Amber Rochini, who, you know, approved these things. So often, when we work with different agencies like this, we run into red tape that knocks it down. And they cut through all of that and made this happen for our students. And so, we're very, very excited and very pleased and very grateful.
I'll add to that. I think I was pleasantly surprised at the courses, at the level of high-level courses that these students will get. I was like, wow, that's great. And when I was at IUP, they didn't do anything like this at this level.
Right.
So, it is truly amazing and so good for our students.
It is. It is a shift, for sure. And it is very rigorous. I mean, it's not something... There is some risk here on the students. When you enter this as a sophomore, you're getting some heavy, very rigorous material at a very young age. And your college transcript is forever. So, you have some skin in the game here. So, if you screw it up, that bad grade is going to follow you forever. However, if you do it right, you get a two-year head start on life for less than $6,000.
Plus, they're going to tailor it to the student's future interests or career goals as well. So, it is going to be tailored individually for students.
Students know what they want to pursue. Like, say it is public childhood education and there are some early classes that these students might be able to take in high school that will count towards their bachelor's degree too, not just towards their associate's, but towards their bachelor's.
Mr. Adams, your mic is off. Do you want to say something?
No, sorry, Rob. I didn't know the mute was off. Sorry, buddy.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, that's... And we actually had a meeting today to talk about ways we can capitalize on this even more in that Grow Your Own program. Yeah, so that's very exciting as well, so.
And the flyer they created, I didn't bring mine, but that was impressive. That was nice for the students to see and promote the program.
Absolutely. Joe Perkovich.
Oh, did he?
Just does it on the inside.
Good.
Well, thank you for all of you for doing this. It's a tremendous asset to our district.
I'd like to thank the people who plowed through all the red tape. And it's unprecedented that WCC and IUP and our faculty and staff and our administration could work this through to get these classes and to the benefit of our students to a point where we also, they also can afford to do this. Now, it's also possible for them to not take the full course, okay? That they, you know, they still get benefits by going even halfway.
100%.
But, you know, to be able to do over 60 credits for less than $6,000 is a miracle, okay? And I've worked with both of these institutions and it's so easy to get to know that, no, we can't do that, no, we can't do that. And these people got to yes. And to the benefit of every kid in that high school and every family in this district. It's really, it's really truly remarkable. Okay, when you say it's in the Commonwealth, it may be... I can't believe that these institutions that I've worked with for years, okay, could actually pull this off and put together a program that is viable and hugely beneficial to our community. So, I can't say enough. And if that's not the lead story, then they aren't...
One thing I was thinking about, Jim, I think with outreach, you're the ones that are looking at that new foundation or revamping our foundation. This would be a great opportunity to raise some scholarships for kids in high school who maybe can't afford...
Right, even can't afford $6,000.
That's not a lot of money, but there are a lot of people in our community that can't afford the $6,000. So, it might be nice that that might be a good focus area to have scholarships for our high school kids.
Absolutely.
I can't imagine the benefit of these kids being juniors in college with no debt. Okay, it's incredible. Just incredible.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Sue, you're still up.
At 5.16, we received a MOU from River Valley that we've been asked to consider that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves the Memory of Understanding with River Valley School District to provide workforce development, education, and training in courses, as well as programs of study not available at the CTC or is oversubscribed as presented.
I'm going to second this, but...
Okay, discussion.
So, we can talk about it. Yeah, the committee did not recommend this.
I just, I mean, I have concerns over the cost of the approved programs that definitely define, plus potentially our teachers' union.
Yeah, our committee was concerned about the implications it could have for our teachers.
Yeah, that is right. It could be considered a diversion of labor if we would send students from our school district to their school district for something that's not a state-approved program and within the confines of the law. Our teachers' union absolutely could agree to that and we could be in a ton of trouble that way. So, that's one barrier. On top of that, I would also note that with River Valley pulling out of the ICTC, you know, that throws up a couple of red flags too and some things we have to work through before we, you know, we feel, or before I would feel comfortable recommending to you that we jump into this, you know?
I think go work on them and bring them back to us. I guess we have to vote.
Vote. Yeah, we'd have to vote on this particular MOU whether or not we want to...
So, it sounds like we're not... So, what's... How about, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
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 Okay, the nays have it. It sounds unanimous. Okay, Jim Shaker, please. Dr. Shaker.
All right, we had a very efficient meeting today where we discussed some amendments and changes to five different policies that will be on the agenda tonight, the first reading. And that was it. So, the... I have a lot of motions here. So, we're going to do, we're going to do all the ones with names separate. So, 6-2 to 6-4, we're into is together, 6-2 resignation of support staff. Board accepts with regret the letter of resignation from Wayne Nicewonger, maintenance worker due to retirement effective June 28th, '24. That we approve the custodian substitute list as submitted. And the board approves the first read of the following board policies. Number 222 Tobacco and Vaping Products, Policy 227 Controlled Substance Paraphernalia, Policy 323 Tobacco and Vaping Products, Policy 351 Controlled Substance Abuse, and Policy 707 Use of School Facilities.
Second.
Any questions? Or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you.
All right. 6-5, based on the recommendation of administration, Kayla Struble be employed as paraeducator effective August 19th, '24 at an hourly rate of $13.75 per hour, subject to 60-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved. I guess we can just read all these.
Do you want to do all of them?
Yeah.
Do a ballroom.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. That based on the recommendation of administration, the board approves the employment of Robert Peace as Assistant Supervisor of Building and Grounds at an annual salary of $65,000. That based on the recommendation of administration, Amy Kukla be employed as ELA teacher effective August 19th, '24 in accordance with the certification and annual salary of $51,752. Step 1 Instructional 1 pending receipt of updated clearances and Clear Act 168 forms. That based on the recommendation of administration, Maria Siro be employed as elementary teacher effective August 19th, '24 in accordance with their certification at annual salary of $51,752. Step 1 Instructional 1 pending receipt of updated clearance and Act, Clear Act 168 forms. That based on the recommendation of administration, Logan Lichenfeld be employed as elementary teacher effective August 19th, '24 in accordance with their certification and annual salary of $51,752. Step 1 Instructional 1 pending receipt of updated clearances and Clear Act 168 forms. That based on the recommendation of administration, Alexa Solis be employed as elementary teacher effective August 19th, '24 in accordance with their certification at the annual salary of $51,752. Step 1 Instructional 1 pending receipt of updated clearances and Clear Act 168 forms. That based on the recommendation of administration, Ashley Johnson be employed as an elementary teacher effective August 19th, '24 in accordance with their certification and annual salary of $77,264. Step 2 Bachelors pending receipt of updated clearance and Clear Act 168 forms. And that based on the recommendation of administration, Mara King be employed as an elementary teacher effective August 19th, '24 in accordance with their certification and annual salary of $51,752. Step 1 Instructional 1 pending receipt of updated clearances and Clear Act 168 forms. And last but not least, that based on the recommendation of administration, the board employs Teresa Capo as a homebound instructor for 22 hours over the summer at $30 per hour pending receipt of updated clearances and Clear Act 168 forms.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I absolutely have to make some comments here. So, for those of you following along at home or at the press, you'll notice that we added an additional motion or a piece to this motion at the last minute. That was necessary due to numbers exploding in our kindergarten registration. We did intentionally, months ago, post and advertise for up to five positions coming into this board meeting. We thought we were only going to hire four. Because of the increase in numbers, it became an emergency to hire five. So, that's why we amended the motion here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Great, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tom Marley, you're up. Building and grounds.
Oh, we didn't have a meeting. We do have a meeting in a week. Do we have any update on Eisenman? We usually get that day to Jared at this point.
Yeah, I don't think I do. He sent pictures.
He sent it one last... He sent us last...
Yeah, so the Tuesday meeting tomorrow, yeah.
Looks nice. I drove fun.
I wasn't aware of any flags or anything on those reports.
Right.
So, come the next morning, Building and Grounds meeting next week and we can get more information. Change orders, there's four change orders in front of you. All of these are under the $10,000 limit that Jared and Larry work under. So, they feel these are worthwhile to approve. So, I'd like to make a motion that based on the recommendation of the committee, the following change orders rise and our additional renovation project be approved, 1, 2, 3, and 4, one being across an additional $4,760.5. McCruss and Electrical CO3 Additional $8325.16. Number 3 is McCruss and Electrical CO4 Additional $2,096.30. JC Orr Additional $7318.60.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
7.4 Solar Power Collaboration. That the board approves Indiana School District's participation in the solar technology and energy efficiency leadership. Schools' funding request to U.S. Department of Energy for the purpose of having a feasibility study conducted for the potential of a solar project at East Pike Elementary.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Tom, you want to talk or Rob talk about this a little bit?
You start. I'll fill in.
This is a commitment just to enter into a partnership to apply for money to do a feasibility study. So, we're not actually installing solar panels anytime soon. All we're doing is joining a conglomerate of other schools in the district or in the area to apply for money, to have a company come and look at whether or not this would save us money. If that happens, we'll bring back the next step, which would be we will then apply for a grant. And if we... That, it's actually not a grant, it's an award. It's a prize. If we are successful there, this could bring $14 million into the district to install these solar panels that would in turn save us energy costs down the road. So, this is non-committal at this point. It's just to apply for the money to have someone come and tell us if it's even feasible.
This is headed by PA Solar, which is a pseudo-government. It's funded by Harrisburg and they've put together a conglomeration of school districts. I think there are eight school districts.
Yeah, last I counted, there might be more than that.
Yeah, and so, they're making a push to get this prize. This is not limited to East Pike Elementary. This is a feasibility study for the whole district and putting us into a pot with other districts. And the rules on solar have changed to make the funding for municipalities and government and nonprofits equitable. Before, there was no benefit for nonprofits to participate. And so, the landscape has changed on this. And so, PA Solar is putting together this group. We're asking to join that group to see if we can, to see where it goes. There's no cost to it and see what happens.
Yeah, if the board approves this motion, I'm going to write a letter tomorrow that he sent it that says we're interested in participating with no commitment and we had to fill out a form that...
No financial commitment.
No financial commitment. And we did have to fill out a form, though, that did have to focus on one school, which we did choose East Pike, but we couldn't expand it beyond that. So, that's where we were.
Any further comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. Okay, next. I'm up. We did not have, for Audit and Finance, we didn't have a committee meeting tonight, but we're going to have one on the 24th. I did speak to Jared a little bit about just that we have a few motions, nothing unusual in the current bills. Given a copy of this donation, a really nice donation, and the tax assessment appeal. So, I think I can take 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4 together. Does anybody have an objection?
I move we approve 8-1, 8-2, or 8-2, 8-3, 8-4.
Okay, second, please.
Second.
Okay. Any questions about this?
No, I would like to thank Mr. Metek for the donation of a little ball equipment.
I'd like to try that.
Yeah, it's a $70 piece of equipment. And what it does is it throws balls consistently into a location and it allows kids to really work on their spins and their hits back. And it's really, really kind of him. It's also recognition of the tennis coach having 60-some kids on the girls' and boys' team. So, it's... And the coach tells me that it's being used all the time.
Yeah, it's a great thing. Okay, any further comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And then finally, 8.5, the tax assessment appeal that based on the recommendation of the administration and solicitor, the board approves the appeal agreements with 3MK LLC as presented.
Second.
Any questions about that? I think we've discussed that. Just wanted to make sure that we understand that that's, it is what it is, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, thank you. Okay. That's it.
That's really it.
Well, I do see Mr. McElhaney and Mr. Doug back there.
Well, we saw him on TV. I'm going to let you guys have the baseball team one.
Late news.
I have a picture of you guys on TV, I took a picture.
I was waiting for public comment on agenda items, I heard Rob had mentioned that in the beginning, but it was an awesome performance by the boys. Honestly, they started out early, kept it going throughout, excitement throughout the whole way, 11-3, what a.
What a smashing victory. Amazing.
And I just got a text that Holy Cross beat Holy Ghost, so we play Holy Cross, the school, not the college, on Thursday.
Holy Cross, we get this.
It was Holy Cross that won and they played Holy Ghost.
I don't even know, so you know better than I do.
You should, we know that on TV was just the amount of Indiana people there.
That's crazy.
It was truly.
No matter what, we will be the public school champions come Thursday.
Again, again, again. Yeah, right, dream off, yeah. We were, we were that way with the girls' basketball team a few years ago.
It's fun, sounds like fun.
I'm going to have to go Thursday. Yeah, I have to go.
Drive up.
And I want to congratulate Wade on how well his pants showed up on TV with the, with the hook. It looks like you're ready to go to work.
It's always working.
So it's for public comment?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, your next conference report, Casey Picor, Casey Lamb, Janelle John, Jilla, Jennifer Moore, Sharon. Student activity reports for junior and senior high. Scholarship information for the class of 2024 and information pertaining to the class of 2024. Executive session, we had one tonight to discuss personnel and legal issues.
Yes ma'am.
Next board meeting will be on June 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Tom, recite that back to me, please.
I'm having a private conversation.
Yeah, I know.
We're already there, clean erasers.
Next, really, and next committee meeting, Buildings and Grounds and Transportation, next week at 5:30, Audit and Finance, June 24th at 5:30. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.